This is eight.
Convention of heart, like you got someone doing it.
I do, right there.
Okay. You can come on up, you can just sit there. We call the Baker County Board of County Commission meetings to order. I ask you if you have a cellphone or anything that makes noise, please put it on silent or vibrate, not to disturb the meeting. And we have a guest speaker tonight, or guest person in that one.
Yeah, it's James Prescott. He is our student government chaplain for the whole school. And he's gonna do the prayer and the pledge.
Well, right now, I asked you to stand and listen.
Please bow your heads and close your eyes as I lead us in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for this day, God. Thank you for just letting us all gather here, Lord. I pray for this county that we're in, God, Baker County, Lord, that you'll just help us glorify it, Lord, and help us prosper, help us grow as a community, Lord. And I pray over all the minds in here, Lord, men and women, Lord, that you'll just glorify them, help them glorify you in everything they do, Lord. And I pray this all in your holy, wonderful name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Very impressed of the young men that's been coming in and leading us in our prayer or pledge. It's inspirational. And we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of the agenda. Does everyone have a chance to take a look at the agenda? Staff, is there any changes to?
No, certainly.
Commissioners, if anyone's okay, just take approval to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries elected officials as the next item on the agenda. I don't see any elected officials in here. Now, go to our next item on the agenda. I have two speaker cards. The first one I got was Mr. Doug Moore. Or do you want to speak at the time of?
Well, if you're all gonna take that action now or?
It will be later in the evening, but.
Well, if you'll let me do my thing now, I'll go home.
Go ahead.
Okay. Anyway.
Wait a minute, now I'm gonna make you sit here.
Y'all seen the plans, I gave y'all the project. We've got our bids, we're ready to go, you know.
Okay.
Hopefully y'all approve it tonight and we can move forward. I think it'd be a great thing for the community at a very reasonable price.
Yeah.
And I look forward to the community taking part in this thing to where this is not gonna be a cost to the taxpayers. But I think this thing will carry itself. But I appreciate it very much.
Mr. Doug, on behalf of the board, I wanna thank, I appreciate all the hard work and the stuff that you've put together for the Sanderson Con- Sanderson Community Center. I was fixing to say Sanderson Congregation, oh, Sanderson Community Center.
Hey, you can do some work there too if you want.
Yeah. But we really appreciate the effort you've put out.
Yeah, it's a great, great community there.
Great community.
And I'm proud, I'm proud to be part of it.
Yeah.
I think there's good things to come.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Other comment card I have is on item number ten, Karina Barber.
Good afternoon. My name is Karina Barber. I'm here today to urge you to vote in favor of allocating $100,000 for a comprehensive impact fee study. I understand that $100,000 is a significant number, especially with so many priorities competing for funds. But I'm here to argue that this is not an expense, it is a critical investment in our county's future. For years, our county has experienced inevitable and steady growth. But growth comes with costs. New homes require more roads, schools, fire and rescue. Without data-driven impact sk- uh, data-driven impact fee schedule, existing taxpayers are left to subsidize this growth through higher property taxes. A modern transparent study will ensure that new development pays its fair share, lifting the financial burden from longtime residents. While increasing taxes solely dedicated to schools and emergency services, this eliminates extra funds for items such as community administrative costs, natural disaster damage, recreation for our youth, and community programs for those in need. This study will provide a transparent and legally defensible basis for fees. This is not about guessing. It's about using current data to accurately calculate the real costs associated with new development. If we are to avoid legal challenges and ensure our fees hold up in court, we must have a rigorous, up-to-date analysis from an expert consultant. Developers need, developers need certainly, by establishing need certainty, by establishing clear and predictable impact fees, we create a level playing field for everyone involved. This study is not designed to stifle growth, but to direct in a way that is smart and sustainable. It allows us to strategically plan where and how to invest in our infrastructure, ensuring our community grows responsibly for the county's future. Without an update information, the county cannot accurately assess infrastructure needs in different areas, which can encourage inefficient sprawling development. While spending $100,000 might seem like a lot in the short term, delaying the study can lead to a much larger financial problems. Waiting longer will possibly see an increase in the cost of both the study and necessary infrastructure projects as construction prices and inflation continue to rise. In conclusion, the choice before you, I feel, is simple. We can either spend $100,000 today to secure our financial future and manage growth effectively, or we can gamble with our residents' tax dollars and risk leaving our essential infrastructure underfunded or subject to speculative funding. Let's not pass the costs of new growth onto the backs of our existing taxpayers. I ask you to do the responsible thing. Vote yes on the $100,000 for the impact fee study. It's a right investment for our county, our residents, and our future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Right.
I don't have any other speaker cards, but if you'd like to speak to the board, if you'll fill out a speaker card and get it to the staff, they will get it to me and I'll let you speak at the appropriate time. And we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the consent agenda items. Does everyone have a chance to look at everyone, everything on the consent agenda?
Make motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Our first item on our new business is F E O T work program. Amy Robertson and David Tyler.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is David Tyler. I work for the Florida Department of Transportation. I have some handouts here, if that's okay? Okay. All right, so Sarah's handing out.
Kayla.
Kayla, thank you. Is the, right now, actually at the same time as this meeting, we are hosting our work program public hearing in Jacksonville. And so unfortunately, it fell at the same time as this commission meeting. So we thought it'd be good for us to show up, bring you guys a copy of the projects for Baker County that are on that, that work program list and kind of go through them with you. And another thing I wanted to do is just, you know, make ourselves available as an agency if you have any comments or questions. I think you guys are the front line ultimately of a lot of feedback and issues that you hear from your constituents. And so Sarah does a great job and the staff level does a great job communicating those to us. But we just wanna make ourselves available to you as well. And if we need to meet, you know, individually outside to talk about anything in your, in your district, let us know, we can do that as well. But just kind of going through that list of projects, and there's a couple, there's some, some ones you're probably familiar with, and there's a few new ones on here. There's some bridge replacement projects. We have County Road 120 over North Prong Street, St. Mary's River Bridge. That's funded eight and a half million dollars in 2028 for replacement of that bridge. We have County Road 125, this is an off-system road, South Glen Avenue from I-10 to US-90. That's 1.2 million dollars in 2027. We also have another bridge replacement, County Road 229 over Cedar Creek Bridge. That's in 2028 at 6.7 million funded for construction. We also have funding for ITS signal maintenance agreements that we have with you all. Rest area improvement replacement project in 2031 on I-10 for the eastbound rest area in 2031 for 2.5 million. We also have PDNE study in 2031 to look at I-10 widening from County Road 125 to 301. We have a median barrier safety project in 2027 to improve the barriers along I-10. In 2027, about $10 million worth of funding on that. Reed Street, which I believe this is a local road as well, from Nutty Buddy Circle to east of East Ridge Estate Drive in 2029, we have 2.8 million there for reconstruction of that. I guess that's a new road, I believe. Richardson Road, another bridge replacement, Richardson Road over South Prong Street, Mary's River Bridge, number, there's a bridge number there, it's in 2029 for replacement of 5 million. We also have a resurfacing job on State Road 121 coming up in 2028 from I-10 to the Georgia State Line. We have other funding for maintenance of the bridge system that's out there today in each year through 2031. We have maintenance for, you know, other routine maintenance programs through 2031 as well on the state highway system. And then again, a continuation of the signal maintenance agreements through 2031 on this last, second to last page. And as well as funding for lighting agreements with Baker County that we have in place. And then the last page is funding for the operating and administration of the Baker County Rural Transit Funding from 2027 through 2031. So those are the projects we have in the program. Obviously, we have projects ongoing that have been funding in prior years that you're probably seeing hit the road as well, but this is what's upcoming in the tentative work program. The, so we'll be hosting the yearly tentative five-year work program tonight from 4:30 to 6:30 with the presentation at 6:00 PM. We'll be accepting public comments on these projects until November 20th, 2025. So if you guys wanna give us any official feedback or anybody from the public, we'll be accepting feedback on those projects. After the public comment period, the tentative work program is then reviewed by the Florida Legislature and the Governor's Office, and it's adopted then by the state secretary of transportation on July 1st of 2026. I also wanna kind of point out, I know, I know staff level's very familiar with this, but we have our solicitation cycles for some of our state grant programs. Safe Route to School is open from September 30th through January 31st. Transportation Alternatives will be, is open to, I guess, the October 22nd through January 22nd, so that's, that's open now. Those applications are submitted through the grant portal, the grant application process, gap portal. And then also Scrap and Scott, which you are familiar with, you've got some successful projects through there. That's open now through January 22nd, and those applications are received through the Oasis Portal, like years previous. And then the other thing I left you with, you know, stop me at any time you have any questions, but this resource guide is something that we've put together with help from our central office. This is a really good guide if you're, if you're wanting to know. Luckily, you have Mr. Bennett on the board, so he can help you navigate D O T, I think, with his experience. But this gives you a good overview of how our district is, has split up in District Two, how projects are funded, the different grant programs, gives you, gives you some of the information surrounding that, as well as contact information for getting in touch with the people at the department if you have anything that you, you want to follow up on. And that's what I have today. I just wanted to give you guys kind of a status on those things. And I appreciate working with you guys, you're good partners with us at the department. And with that, I'll take any comments or questions you might have.
Uh, thank you, David, for the information. I do have one I'd like you to, if you don't mind, check and follow up on. A couple of years ago, there's a federal program come out for off-highway system bridges. And one of them that we worked really closely with to get funded was the Reynolds Bridge, or the Georgia State Line that was to be reviewed. It was on the list, and there's an initial list put together of about 25 projects. I think it was like number 13.
Okay.
And there was proceeding with a PDNE study to be done to look at. Okay, hang on, I'm getting word, it's in progress.
It's in progress. We're going through meetings, regular meetings right now.
For PDNE?
For, for the whole project.
Project Development Environmental. What I would like to know and ask is, it's great that it's going through the process, what's not listed here, and it's not in here now because it's, the PDNE is in process, but it also means there's nothing else funded in here for moving forward with anything from the PDNE and the five-year program.
Sorry, I'm trying to look on my list of projects.
This one, this one we started a couple of years ago, so it may not be on there.
Yeah, it sounds very familiar, so.
So all I'm, all I'm asking, if you don't mind, please, if you'd go back and check to see.
Absolutely, yeah.
Where it might be with future funding for any of the next phases of work? Because I know this one takes a tremendous amount of coordination because it is on the Georgia State Line. It requires us to coordinate not only on the, on the Florida side, but also with Georgia. So it's not a typical project, and I understand, but I just wanna make sure that, that we, that is still being considered for funding as, as the PDNE comes through and, and looking at funding in outer years.
And, and just to follow up, that, that may be the top project on page one, I'm not sure. The County Road 120 over North Prong.
Is that 120?
Yes, 120.
So, so it looks like it's funded.
David, you're doing a phenomenal job here.
We, we don't have.
Funding that for construction in year 2028.
So we're here to serve.
Thank you for the follow-up and the thorough explanation and funding at eight and a half a million, so.
Whenever you see my boss again, please let him know.
I didn't, I didn't catch this 120.
I said the 120 agreement. Didn't wanna interrupt you.
No, you're good. I, I just didn't, I missed it when the first one, but that's the one I know that's been a lot of interest in that one.
Yep.
And, and that's really a critical one for that region, so thank you.
Hey, I do have one. 125 from Madison to US-90. When is that, or, no, what's, what is it, 139 B, wherever the?
From Park Street to.
Park Street, thank you.
From 139 to Park Street.
We're waiting on that, correct?
Okay.
So.
So it's all funded, we're just waiting on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have estimate on anything on that? Or just try to get on their schedule?
Try to get on their schedule, yes.
Come to hurry.
Everybody's trying to.
I know, I know. That just needs to be done.
Any other questions or comments? I have one, man. I just wanna say, we, as a small county, appreciate the Department of Transportation and the work they do in our community. There's a lot of things we would never get accomplished if it wasn't for the F E O T. And we, and we recognize that.
I appreciate that. Yeah, no, and, and we hear that a lot, especially in the rural counties.
Yeah.
I think my one complaint with some of these off-system, these off-system programs is they're not big enough. Because I think ultimately, this is the lifeblood for getting dirt to pave, resurfacing on these local roadways, and so it's not enough money to go, we try and spread it around as equitably as we can. We appreciate you all doing the work, prioritizing and getting us that list in order that we can just fund it down the list. But ultimately, yeah, we appreciate that, and I think we, we do recognize that it's a partnership, and you guys do a lot at the local level with your staff. You're very good here.
I just don't want to go, I know, and all, but we, we appreciate it.
Okay, I'll take that back, yeah, I appreciate that.
And it's a county.
David, I got a question real quick. I'm not sure if it's you or Chris. This right here, the Reed Stafford from Nutty Buddy to East Ridge Estate Drive, will that complete that road?
No.
How much will be left unpaved at that point?
A mile and a quarter, still waiting on the lease, but we're still waiting on right-of-way in that area.
We're waiting on the right-of-way in this area as well, because while I chased and got all the right-of-way done, had all of them deeds and documents signed, when it was sent over for execution, the clerk's office would not agree to execute those and record them because it didn't have a second witness on it. So all of that right-of-way that I chased down and got everybody to sign on, we've got to redo them with new deeds and documents to get that through there. So Sarah, this is on us to go back and follow up with to get those, but that's not a D O T issue, but that is something that must be done in advance of us getting these funds.
Right. But so after, after this particular one in 2029, there'll still be a mile and a quarter left unpaved?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and just keep in mind, through that section, again, there's gotta be right-of-way, and it's been expressed, hopefully the sentiment may have changed, but in that particular area, it's been made very clear that there's no chance of donating right-of-way. I was told that very clearly and very blatantly, that very clearly, that may have changed over time, that'd be great, but this section that we do have the funding for, all the property owners had agreed to give the right-of-way. We got them signed, however, there was, there was, wasn't mutually agreed upon what was needed, we had everything we thought, but, but we couldn't record the deeds because it didn't have a second witness on it, and so we've gotta redo those and get them signed again. But we will do that in advance of this, so we just need to know that that's a process that's gotta be done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Thank you, David.
Item number two, Nehemiah Court and Barbara Point Traffic Study. Mr. Pitt?
Good evening. I'm Brian Pittman, I'm not Jimmy Pittman. He is away on vacation, so he sent me instead, so hopefully I can do the job he would have done. And so I'm kind of up to speed to, like, to present this, or?
Uh, yeah, so they have a copy of the proposal and also of your email from today.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what Kayla's handing out, that kind of helps summarize some of those. We had some questions on, on some of that.
Okay.
So really, I've let the chairman and the board kind of direct us if you guys have specific questions on the traffic study for Brian. We asked him to be here in the event that there were some additional information that maybe you might wanna ask, and a commissioner of law, you had some concerns too, so I'm not sure if you wanna ask one now or if you may answer all your questions.
As far, as far as I go, I think that answered my question. I do have some conflict, just to state with the Nehemiah Court one. I'm a little bit old from, from speaking on that one. As far as Barbara Point, I'm good to go. Okay. So one of my questions was, I think you followed up with it today, we spoke this morning. Yes, sir. About the, the traffic signal. Can you tell me on that? Yeah, so essentially what that was is, he did his assessment based on the entire corridor, because you can't ignore the corridor, whenever you have two large developments coming in. And essentially what that was is saying, due to the traffic at full build-out, whether both are likely to produce up and down that corridor at that intersection, his assessment came to find that likely a traffic signal would be needed there at full build-out, meaning that both are completely built and living in type of traffic, so that's what the determination was. So it was kind of a result of both being in that same area, utilizing that same corridor, the need, or both going in there would create that need for the traffic signal. So kind of a shared causation there. Could you elaborate on where? So that was the intersection, uh, give me one second. Milton Dale Road, North Boulevard and Louder Street is where he determined the signal would need to be. Which is already one on Louder.
I think the intersection were Louder, Milton Dale and North Boulevard almost.
Yes, sir.
Rather than Alabama Store.
Gotcha, Alabama.
Yep.
Okay. So just that one? Yes, sir. So what he, what he did was, he went through that corridor in between the two, and what he found to be more major intersections, he provided an assessment at each, and kind of he established the current condition, what he would believe would be the future condition based on established and kind of averaged populational growth. So he's kind of said, here's what it is, here's what it's expected to be in the five-year period if you did nothing, and then whenever you take the projected growth, future growth along with these developments coming in at full build-out, here's what I estimate it to be with all that traffic included as well. And that's what the determination came to be, was this intersection, if all that traffic is added to it along with what's already there, projected to be there, a traffic signal according to the standard on how D O T instructs you to do traffic studies, likely a signal would be needed there to keep that level of service at what most consider to be acceptable, per se, so. Okay.
Did I mean?
Yes, sir.
Brian, maybe I'm missing something here. So, so let me back up and see if I can make sure I can articulate it. The original study that was done by Buckholz in 2021 was for the inters- for the development of the golf course.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Barbara Point. And in that study, they showed two access points, when it's all said and done, there's two access points, and both of them showed they needed left turn lanes.
Yes, sir.
Right? Northbound left turn lanes, but they did not need southbound rights.
Correct.
And my, and what I see now, this, this review is of two different projects, Barbara Point, which is there at the Gold Golf Course, and Nehemiah, which is down on the Big Curve on Louder.
Yes, sir.
And what I see for Barbara Point is this new recommendation is we still need the turn lanes, the northbound left turn lane at the main entrance for Barbara Point subdivision, but a left turn lane is not needed at the golf course, golf club road.
Yes, sir. That's, that's what it says, how he came to that determination, I'm not sure, I'm not sure if he decided that because of, whatever you have both in consideration, the traffic pattern and directional flow of each, that changed enough?
But again, I'm just trying to follow, so to make sure I'm tracking what it says here.
Yes, sir.
So it's saying we no longer need that one. However, what it does also say is at build-out, you need a traffic signal at the entrance to each one of those subdivisions.
Yes, sir.
And so it shows that you're gonna need a traffic signal at, at the entrance to Barbara Point's main location, and you're gonna need a traffic signal down at Nehemiah Court's main location as well.
Yes, sir.
This also adds northbound lanes, a second northbound lane at US-90.
Right.
At McLennan.
Yes, sir.
It also, it also, which, by the way, we only are able to control, the county has, only has jurisdiction over Louder Street.
Yes, sir.
Not US-90.
Yes.
So we can't dictate what happens on US-90.
Right.
That'd be up to the state if they was, but the state's not permitting anything here.
Yes, sir.
So the state's not gonna have any involvement with that, with this. But we will have to deal with the traffic on Louder Street at that intersection.
Yes, sir.
And also, Louder Street at North Boulevard, which is at the location we're talking about there, at Alabama Store, essentially what we're talking about, it says we need a left, a northbound left turn lane and a southbound left turn lane. We don't have any of that there.
Correct, yes, sir.
So when you look at this, the projects individually, they probably don't trigger some of these improvements.
Correct.
But when you look at them collectively, both of them, it starts to trigger.
Yes, sir.
So we don't know which one is triggering which.
Correct.
Because we don't know which one is gonna build out first.
Correct.
But we do know that both have to be done.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, we do know right now with these improvements, we need one, two, let me back up. The intersection there at North Boulevard and Milton Dale and Louder, does that show it needs a traffic signal there too?
Yes. Yes, it does. Correct me if I'm wrong, we're only talking about one traffic signal. The one that I saw now, I have to read back through, the one that I saw as far as the final recommendation at the bottom, mentioned a traffic signal at Milton Dale, North Boulevard and Louder Street. I'll have to go back through.
Just the one at Alabama's, not at each subdivision?
I'll have to go back and look at that, because I've heard that mentioned a couple of times.
I'm, I'm simply, what I'm looking at, to be clear, and it was in the packet.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the first two pages here that was done by B C W Engineering.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at pages 32 of 33 and 33 of 33.
Yes, sir.
And I'm simply recalling, I'm just reading what it says. And I'm simply recalling, I'm just reading what it says. So if there's, if, if this is saying one thing and another report is showing something different, then that's where I'm trying to understand. What is, what is the outcome? What is recommended? Because this clearly states, traffic signal is recommended at the buildout of both developments and at the.
I'll, I'll look at that. So Dad was handling this. He's away. I kind of came in this late. I'll revisit that and I'll clarify that for sure for everybody to be sure. The final recommendations, which I, is that the page that they all have?
It is.
Okay. Okay. So that's kind of what I was looking at. But yes, sir. But any, anything that, what I kind of explained to everybody was these can be subjective, the data you use, how you use it, how you project things. I can certainly ask to clarify anything that might sound controversial or might, might not add up in your mind. I don't mind asking him to clarify or ask him how he came to those conclusions. If there's another way to do something potentially, want to make it more cost effective, any of that I can go back and ask and have a discussion with him on that.
Sarah, when do we have to have comments back to the city? And that's, that's where I'm concerned with. Now, we, we're put in a position this evening to make a recommendation on what to do, put comments back to the city. But there's, there's, for me, there, there is some concerns here with this because I don't know, when you start looking at how many homes is going to go into where the golf course is and, and the volume of traffic out, does it need a traffic signal? I, I am a bit surprised that it does come back to show we don't need turn lanes, a left turn lane in at the, the second access point. So we've got two access points to serve that entire development.
Yes, sir.
It's been very clear that development will not have any other access points. It's not going to have any access off of Milton Dale or anywhere else. So every bit of the traffic is coming out to Louder Street.
Yes, sir.
And it surprised me that we don't need at least a left turn lane there. I was okay with that when I saw that it does require traffic signal at the main entrance.
Yes, sir.
That will draw a lot of people using that traffic signal to be able to use that.
Yes, sir.
But if it doesn't, if we're not putting a traffic signal there, I, I have a hard time understanding that the only thing that entire development needs is a single left turn lane on Louder Street. That one is, that one seems like it's, it's, we're missing something there.
Yes, sir.
It, it seems like we're, we're going to have a whole lot more traffic than, than what a single left turn lane can handle for going into that subdivision. And so again, that's where I'm, and this we just, just now handed out. So I haven't seen this email that come in.
Yes, sir.
Until we sit in here with, trying to look through it. So
Yes, sir.
I'm a little bit concerned with trying to give a response back to the city this early on.
Well, I think for Barbara Point, it's not quite a rush, obviously because that has a settlement agreement that they've already gone through all those processes. I'm not sure what Nehemiah's Court's schedule is. I'm assuming it's on the agenda for next month with them for consideration at the city. I'm not sure. Do you guys have, what, do you know what date that is?
The 18th.
The 18th.
Okay. Well, what I am concerned with is Louder Street, no, this whole stretch of Louder Street continues to get busier and busier.
Yes, sir.
And we need to make sure we got the traffic, that the traffic's being addressed when you're developing that golf course on the other side, right?
You guys will have the opportunity to meet again before the city's hearing on Nehemiah Court.
Then I, before the city's hearing on Nehemiah Court?
Yes, sir.
But Barbara Point, do we also have time to?
Barbara Point is under a settlement agreement, so they are just in a engineering review process. They don't have to have any public hearings. They've already met that obligation.
My suggestion is because of questions about this, if it's okay, unless there's a reason not to, I'd like to defer action by the board of recommendations to the board until we can kind of address to make sure it's very clear. What is the out, what is the recommendations?
Yes, sir.
What is the clear recommendations that's come from the review of these traffic studies with the, with each one as well as collectively on the corridor?
Yes, sir.
Man, if they're not scheduled for the 18th at the city, we could meet as long as we've got our recommendations made at that first meeting. Yeah. Yeah. I don't know if you guys could hear that conversation or not, what Commissioner Mobley was asking for clarification is if we delay it, our, our board meets on November the 4th. If we could have that engineer that did the actual study here, Brian, to help answer those questions.
Yes, ma'am.
We would still have a recommendation, hopefully if our questions are answered at that meeting before your hearing with the city on the 18th. I just want to make sure the applicant for Nehemiah's Court heard that.
And, and, and just kind of thinking through how we're going to have to deal with this is we're going to have to put forth recommendations for each one of these individually.
Yes, sir.
But yet we got to deal with them all collectively.
Yes, sir.
So we need to kind of understand whose impacts is causing what. And clearly Barbara Point's impacts are causing it at their two interest points. No doubt about that. Nehemiah's Point is really doing all the impacts at theirs. However, what's not clear is who's causing the impacts at US 9, which requiring is a dual left turn lane, dual northbound left turn lane.
Yes, sir.
Who's creating that impacts? Because if we don't address and figure out who is causing the impact, then we can't assess it and say this is what's, what's got to be done.
Yes, sir.
By this development and by Barbara Point development, this is what your requirements are here.
Understood.
Nehemiah Point, here's what your requirements are. And the other side of that is we need to make sure we understand when the timing is. And what latitude, what ability do we as a county have on saying when those improvements go in?
Yes, sir.
To say it's required at buildout means that we're going to have a lot of traffic backups before it actually, it's going to be required before it goes in. Excuse me. It's going to be, the traffic demand is already going to be there before we ever address it.
Right.
Versus us requiring that to go in earlier.
Yes, sir.
And it be there when the traffic builds up to it.
Proactive, not reactive.
Right. And so we need to make sure we can articulate what our expectations are as to when we would expect the traffic signal to go in before they can actually make the connections. Because once they make the connection, we have zero leverage anymore.
Yes, sir.
We're not going to go out and block off it. We can't have any issue, any ability to withhold permits or anything. So our only leverage that we have to ensure these improvements are done is either we have them done before they make the connection or two, we solely rely on the city to do it.
I would, I would see, I'm in the middle of a lawsuit with another county on that issue for number one, I would say required ahead of time. Because oftentimes these projects run out of money when it gets toward the end and the road always costs more than they thought it was going to cost.
And, and five years later, the costs are far, far greater than what there was, and they're going to come on back and have participation. So that's exactly where my thoughts are. And I'm concerned with, we can require those improvements on Louder Street at both locations. I'm more concerned about how we require any other improvements because there's no longer any such thing as PUDs, you know, things like that that require off-site improvements. So I'm not sure how we're going to be able to assess those, but clearly access locations, we need to make sure that those are right. And so that's where I'm really focused right now, Brian, is, is what are the requirements? What are we proposing at Barbara Point? What are we requiring here?
Okay.
For the access points or the turn lanes or is it traffic signals very clearly at each one of their access points? Because I think they have two access points each.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, the hope would be that the city would take a position that doesn't approve the recommendations outside of what our concerns are.
I, I would hope so as well. And city works very well with this, so I'm not saying anything negative. I just.
Oh, no, no.
But we, we have, we get to control Louder Street and you don't ever know what's going to happen. At the end of the day, there could be changes agreed to down the road, mutually agreed upon between the development and the city that changes things, but we are no longer at the table. So I'm, I would lean towards making sure the improvements are clearly articulated and we relay those to the city early on as well as the timing of when we would expect those so that it's no misunderstanding from the onset.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Go ahead.
I can't speak on behalf of Nehemiah, Nehemiah's, but I'm looking at Barbara Point. I know there are multiple phases in that project. So even if we, you know, articulate something before they begin phase two, this has to be done or something along those lines. But I think, would that have to be the city?
Yes.
Or could that, that could be us.
It's the city. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Either we require it all upfront or we are solely at the discretion of the city on enforcement of it. And if they, and you know as well as I do, political pressure can change what is enforced in agreement. So that's why I'm, we only going to have one bite at the apple to make sure it's done right. That's.
Right. Okay. Mr. Mobley, something else is helpful. I know that he kind of default used five years. That's what the standard is suggested to. Yes, sir. If you have a different timeline or anybody else you all speak to has a different timeline, that could possibly change some of the recommendations at what time as well. So if they have a more robust estimation of here are the phases that will be done, here's the timeline for each, that might also be helpful as far as kind of refining these recommendations. So whoever it is could provide those to us, that'd be very helpful, I feel. Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Just a question for Rich. In years past, we've done roadway improvement agreements with the developer. Those were specific to county projects. Would that be in line with how we would show this on record with the developer? Because we've got a sample contract with that. Once we come up with recommendations, we can plug those in. But it's probably been five or six years since we've held a developer to one of those agreements. So just some food for thought if we need to do it that way.
I would think it would have to be between the city and the developer, not us.
Not us. So ours would just be like a letter to the city with what the recommendations would be and then.
What the requirements.
What the requirements would be.
What the county requirements are going to be. So it's on record documented before the developer moves forward. He knows what our requirements are going to be.
Gotcha. And then the roadway improvement would be strictly between the developer and the city. Okay, got it. Just want to make sure from our understanding, we understand the process. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I got, only comment I have is I am a member of the Louder Street travel team. I got to the meeting this afternoon at, right at 5:00. I left my house at 18 till 5:00 to drive one mile. And I'm trying to get out of Louder Street, that Tory Road Drive.
Yes, sir.
I had to wait and wait and wait. And finally snuck me a point where I could get my big diesel out there and I had to hammer down to get out.
Yes, sir.
So it's just, I'm going to be passionate about both of these.
Sure. Understood.
Just for the simple fact, I, I think there needs to be turn lanes.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to kind of push for turn lanes. I think traffic, traffic signals are helpful too, because it allows the people to sitting on the side of the road that needs to get out.
Yes, sir.
Time to get out and not where people's, if you notice when people are traveling, they want to get 100 yards apart and then stagger, which is safe and which is what they should do. But then that don't allow anybody in between them to ever get out.
Right.
So I'm going to encourage traffic signals at both developments and I am definitely center turn lanes. Because I'm going to tell you what happens during school time. All the school buses come from the high, high school. They come up 90, they hit Louder. And then that's how they get around to the schools here in McClin.
Okay.
So what happens, if we didn't have a deputy sitting there to help us, we would never get out.
Right.
So it's not just the peak, it's those times that's really bad.
Yes, sir.
School time. And we, and if you got cars that's trying to turn into that development and there's no turn lanes.
Right.
Them buses are going to sit on the road waiting for people to get in and out.
Yes, sir.
There's got to be some type of management there.
Understood.
And I'm really a little more passionate about it because I live it, I use it.
Yes, sir.
And I was almost late for the meeting because I was actually sitting in, believe it or not, in Baker County, waiting to get out on Tory Road Drive.
Understood.
And when the buses are coming, it's 10 times worse.
Yes, sir.
You might as well just, I know when the buses are coming, I don't even leave my house.
Well, you just don't want someone to get hurt.
It's bad. I mean, it's bad. I mean, I had to get out.
Yes, sir.
But I was going to be late for my meeting. So I'm, I'm going to encourage traffic signals and when you go back and do your fine and turn signal or turning lanes. If there's no turning lanes, I'm going to be very.
Yes, sir. Understood. Yes, sir.
One of the things, just again, just to try to get clarification on, while in the report on 3233, this 7.1 findings, it also says side access at Louder Street for, this is for Nehemiah's Court. It says a right-in, right-out only access connection is recommended. A southbound turn lane is not. First of all, it's a rural roadway. You can't have just a right-in, right-out. There's, there's no way to do that. So that really doesn't work. And that doesn't really, is not consistent with when it says they're recommending a signal at buildout. So there's, there's an inconsistency.
I'll, I'll understand.
Again, that would be very nice to have very clearly the points at all these key locations and what is expected at each one of them.
Yes, sir.
Caused by the development.
Yes, sir.
But I am pro-development. I think that it's good that we're getting houses for, I'd like to see my youngest and everyone live in here in Baker County, stay in Baker County.
Yes, sir.
But we got to do it smart.
Correct.
And traffic is, is becoming an issue in Baker County and we're going to have to manage that.
Yes, sir.
Understand the best way we can out.
Yes, sir.
And we got a traffic man sitting up there with us, so we are blessed to have him sitting up there with us.
This, your, your study focused on traffic. Did we have any, has it been any review or anything else for pedestrian access? Because that was the other thing that we talked about with sidewalks. Because that was one of the discussions we had that we need to think about and our recommendations back for Barbara, Barbara Point especially. Do we want the sidewalk extended up to the main entrance so that there's sidewalks there? I know down at, on Nehemiah's Court, there is sidewalks on the other side of the road. But, but again, and they're different than Louder. We only have them on the opposite side here as well. But we may want to make sure that in our recommendations, we, we address sidewalks and how it has to be handled as well.
Brian, if you could look at that for us, do the pedestrian access.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. We can get offline about what we talked about at our last meeting about it and I'll fill in on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? So it's going to come back to us on next meeting, November 3rd.
November 4th.
Do we need action to defer it?
Do, I don't think so.
It'll be bound the agenda again.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you for doing it, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Just for a quick, these are all off.
Everything shifted a little bit.
Everything got shifted by one. So, so just, I noticed earlier, I just didn't know that.
I didn't notice. Okay, item number three, which is a UTV, Chief Grant. We got a 6 o'clock meeting, so I'm going to adjourn.
Yes, sir.
In time to get into.
I've got two of them back to back. One's the UTV and the other is the, the grant from the state of Florida. The first one tonight, the agenda item, most of y'all probably remember when we were going through the budget process, we discussed the fact that our Title III money that we get from the federal government is going away. So we've, we've got to use it wisely and it's dedicated funds. One of the things that we've been in need of for several years and had not had the ability to purchase until this time is an off-road UTV that we can use in a forest and also use. It's going to be a dual role, help with firefighting, but also carries a full-size stretcher, Stokes basket capability for things that happen in the forest. We've had, just in the last month, we've had two things where we had to go into the forest and retrieve people. That's what this is about. We researched it, found, did all the measurements and what we needed and found the vendors and where it was at. And fortunately, we found that we were able to get through the sheriff's purchasing program with the state of Florida where they guaranteed the low bid price and found the vendor with the state. And that's how we moved forward with that. So funds are already in place with the Title III and we're just asking for approval to not move forward with that purchase.
Any questions or comments?
I, I do. Do we, do we have, doesn't the sheriff's office have a number of ATVs, UTVs?
They do. They have a couple of them. Yes, sir.
And we can't use those without spending $60,000 on buying a separate one for, for, for that, our department? I mean, because I, I don't, I'm confident theirs aren't in use all the time as well. So I'm trying to understand, do we not have, do we not share the resources?
It's honestly two different pieces of equipment. Theirs is more set up for officers that patrol. This is an open cab, extended bed for a full-length stretcher. Theirs does not have that capability as the short bed where the person would hang off the back four or five feet, increased UGVW. It's just, it's a different piece of equipment. I'm sorry, you know, but that's, that's kind of where that's at. We had one, from what I'm told, and years ago, from many years ago that they had for, for that capability. But I think it was, when I say many years ago, I think we're probably talking about maybe 15 or 20 years ago, if we want to be honest with you. And it's, the last time I saw it was several years ago and it was headed to a government auction thing with the wheels hanging off of it, but.
I drove it in 2006.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Yeah.
That's where that's at.
And actually, we, we used it to be our, our Christmas parade float. Pulled the trailer for a couple of times. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. It was pretty old.
This will, this will hold a full-size stretcher?
Full-size Stokes basket in the back of it, right. And that's the biggest problem with it. The ones that are the standard length, they have to build them, they have to build them up because of the, of the length situation. And we had to, we had to search with all the manufacturers and all the vendors to find one that had the extended bed on there to do that. So that's what that's for.
So where would we use this, this piece of equipment at?
We use. We use this whenever we go into the forest, and we have to go help people and extract people out of the woods, like we had a month ago, we had somebody in a tree stand accident, the year before that, we had another person in a tree stand accident. We've had, gosh, seven or eight fires in the solar farms, where we have to ride down between the actual solar panels where a vehicle won't fit, so we use it for that as well. It's also used when you have things like when the parades are in town, special events, old rusty battlefield, we, right, right now, currently, we borrow units from the sheriff's office when we have something, old rusty battlefield, but then, once again, you're talking about something that's a very short bed, that's more geared for a patrol vehicle versus something that holds a stretcher. So those are just some special events that are used in addition to the response that we use in the, in the forest.
Where would you stage it?
It'll be most likely staged at the station that's in, in Sanderson. We've measured the, the bay to have the ability that the truck that would pull it will fit in the same bay in line.
So is this funding in your budget?
Yes, sir.
For this line item?
And just as a reminder, this is the last year of this funding, if we don't spend it, we have to submit it back to the federal government. So this is, this is not a continued funding source for us, it ends in this budget cycle.
Right, this was the, was this part of the agreement with the forest?
Yes.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. We got a letter from them that said that we had to, to use these funds, and to be honest with you, this is something that's actually been on our radar for several years. When we submitted our, our budget package this year, we broke it down, and it's probably six or eight different categories of different things that we needed to use this money for, and this was listed in that package.
Sure.
Gee, can you tell me a little bit more about what the fire skid outfit is?
Yes, sir, that, that is an aluminum bed that goes on the back of that link that you're talking about, and it's got a, a low-profile water tank with a pump, and it's also got a, a setup bracket, call it what you want, to haul a Stokes basket with medical bag equipment on it.
Is this equipped with lights and things?
There are some low-profile lights that will be on it, but this is not a big fancy light bar, there's no air conditioning, no inside cab, this is a work vehicle.
Okay, and just to be clear, so you understand where my line of questions coming from?
Oh, yeah.
The last time we had one of these come before, that I recall?
Yes, sir.
It was really decked out with big tires, bubble tires, lights, and everything else associated with it, and the explanation was given is because, well, for example, if we have an accident on the, on the field, at the football field, we could go out onto the field, but I'm like, you don't need lights, you don't need all these things, you don't need giant tires, and we got ambulances sitting there, so I'm just wanting to make sure what we're buying, because, because I'm seeing a twenty-nine thousand dollar.
Right.
Fire up skid to go onto a, onto a twelve thousand dollar vehicle.
Well.
And so I'm just making sure that, that, that we're on the same page with, that's why I'm asking where I'm at with it.
No, sir, this is, look here, we're, we, we think alike on this, there's no siren on this thing, there's no light bar on this thing, there's no air conditioning, no enclosed metal wheels, this is a, this is a work vehicle. Basically, if you see one of our brush trucks with the, with the diamond plate back that has the water tank and the compartments on it, it's a miniature version of that that can go in more confined spaces.
Okay.
No frills, to be honest with you, most of this money is in the technical equipment that rides on the skid in the rear.
Okay, and how do we transport it, and how do we move it, what do we use to move it?
We'll be purchasing a trailer that will be pulled by an existing brush truck.
And we don't have any numbers on the trailer or anything else yet? Because I, that's what, to buy this, to use it, we've got to have another piece of equipment to take care of it too, and so, to a trailer.
Right, we will, we will be purchasing a, a trailer that it will go on, yes, sir.
And we have any idea what cost is on that one?
Yes, sir, between thirty-five and four thousand dollars, thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five, okay. Don't tell me you're buying a thirty-five thousand dollar trailer, not for this, you're not, so.
No, you're right.
Thank you for that clarification.
No, 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 and look, and look, to give you an idea, the, the ones that are really nice with the air conditioning and all that fancy stuff, they run about forty-five thousand dollars just for the unit itself. This unit, without the fire equipment on it, and then the rescue equipment that goes in the back, actually builds out of twenty-nine thousand dollars, it's a, it's a base model unit, so.
Any other questions or comments? What's the favor of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Have motion second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. All right, let's go ahead real quick on the next one.
This next one is something we apply for every year with the state of Florida, and it, the state of Florida does a fifty-fifty match for firefighting equipment, for the same thing to be used in the, in the rural atmosphere and in the wildland interface. It's a fifty-fifty match, most years that we've done this in the past, our fifty percent came out of our budget, but this year, we took the fifty percent out of our Title III funds, which we also put in our budget package this year. So our fifty percent has been budgeted, and we're not asking for any additional money for this. It's a fifteen thousand dollar, and the seventy-five hundred is what our county will, will put forth, or we use the Title III money, hose, nozzles, that kind of, that kind of stuff.
Yes, sir. That's the same Title III money we just use?
Yes, sir, same thing.
Okay.
And just, just, I know that you asked about this during budget time, I sent a detailed letter to the finance department that this was something that was coming, and, and with a complete explanation from the USDA of everything that fit into that category, what qualified, what didn't qualify, and how that they can see this going through the year, so there's gonna be no confusion of where this money's going through the process.
Any other questions or comments? What's the favor of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Have motion second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
One quick comment, Sarah?
Yes, sir.
Make sure we tag this one as another one deal with the budget amendments at one time, okay?
Yes, sir, it's all my responsibility.
Yeah, three-minute recess.
We call this back county board, county commissioners meeting back in session. And we're going to go right into our public hearing.
All right, good evening.
How are you?
So I have just a couple of applications for you this evening. The first two applications are companion applications, so if it's okay with you, I will present them together.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So these two, first two applications are for first reading, so this will be the first time that you're hearing them. So this is for ordinance number 2025-33, a small scale land use amendment, and ordinance number 2025-34, a rezoning with the request of very low density residential to medium density residential, and residential conventional mobile home to residential conventional mobile home point five. So this parcel is located off of Gaskin Circle. It's currently a one acre parcel. Again, very low density residential and residential conventional mobile home are the land use and zoning currently. This property is vacant and currently in compliance with all zoning standards. However, the applicants wish to have the flexibility to add an additional dwelling in the future for their parents. So it would be their intent to put a dwelling there for themselves, and then one for their parents as well. No intention to split the parcel. It would be their intention to have two dwellings on one, one acre parcel. So if you look at the maps here, this area kind of has a little, a little mix of things. There's quite a bit of very low density residential with RCMH 2.5 and some RCMH 1. And then you'll see the parcel right next door to this parcel, and then a couple parcels down on the other side is medium density residential and RCMH point five already. So we do feel that it kind of meets the trend of this area at the time, at this time. So the applicant's request would result in a conforming lot when they put those two dwellings there. They would have very similar uses and lot requirements with a minimal change in density. Again, the parcel right now would be in compliance and is currently vacant. Staff recommended approval and LPA recommended approval as well.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments on this parcel? Hearing nothing from the board. Anyone in the public like to speak on these applications? Hearing none, let's move on.
All right. So the next application that we have is for a rezoning. It's ordinance number 2025-35 with a request of light industrial to heavy industrial. So this parcel is the current home of Burnham Construction. It's located off of Enterprise East Boulevard, just past the Walmart DC. So if you see in the aerial there, this is where the DC is, and then this is the location of Burnham Construction. Currently, it already has a land use of industrial, so that's why you do not see a companion land use application. This is a 20 acre parcel. It, right now, is used for the office and storage construction, which it has continued that use since the initial industrial and light industrial requests. So this parcel went through a land use, a land use and zoning to industrial and light industrial about 10 years ago. There are, there are staff notes from back then that it was the property owner's intent to eventually have a manufacturing plant for asphalt. However, during those public meetings, that was not openly discussed. We feel that it meets that heavy industrial category, so that is why you see that request here tonight. It doesn't quite meet the parameters of light industrial for that asphalt manufacturing. So if you look at the maps here, you'll see there is a mix of industrial uses and some agricultural uses. On two sides, you have industrial, two sides you have agriculture. We did not receive any comments from property owners with this application. The only, the only conversation that we did have was the property owners to the north, this property right here. They shared with us that it would be their intent in the next couple of years to request an industrial land use and zoning as well for the future use of that property. There, in, right now, in discussion, there's a small portion of wetlands on that property to the north. So we have not seen that application while they, while they address that. So that's the only comment that we've had.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Are you talking about the Twitch parcels that you said?
Yeah.
The one that's on agricultural zone?
Yes.
Those two parcels, right?
Yes, this here. That's the only property, neighboring property owners that, that we've spoken to.
The one that's immediately to the north and adjacent to it, that is owned by Baker County Development Corporation, correct?
Yes, it is.
And the one immediately adjacent to that is Carolyn M. Tyndall?
Yes, so this is the one that's owned by the Development Commission that we spoke to.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
So we have the flood map.
That wasn't a discussion again. It was a discussion just saying that it was...
Yes, yes, that was the only discussion that it would be there.
No.
No, no.
Let's move on.
Yep. So you'll see the flood map here. There is, the flood zone does come along the other side of the Walmart DC, but there is not any that falls on this side of Enterprise East. So the applicant's request would, would have similar uses, but would allow them to, would allow them to do the manufacturing that is requested at this time. It does fit the trend for this aerial, for this area. This, there are very few areas in the county that have an industrial use in a, kind of a node like this. So staff does recommend approval and LPA recommended approval as well.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions or comments for anyone on the board?
I'm excited the fact that we may have actually some industrial here that's producing asphalt, because we're all, everybody's needing asphalt, so.
How far is it from homeowners, would it be?
How far is it from homeowners? So there is...
Because there is, this looks like a...
Yes, so there is, right here, this blue square. That's Allen Acres subdivision, so there is a, there is housing right here in this area. That's the only thing, in, from this aerial shot, that's the only place that there's housing. There is some, just down 90, just a little bit, there's some more development, but it's just that one.
There is a buffer between...
There is, there is. And with, with those industrial uses, there are additional requirements, bufferage requirements, if it butts up to residential property, so.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the public have any questions or comments on this item? Continue, please.
Okay, so the next one we have, I think Kayla just handed out an updated staff report. So, so you may have two of those. The one that is stapled together is the updated, is the updated version, and I'll explain, I'll explain why you're getting an updated version. So this application is for a subdivision exemption for preliminary review. This property is located off of 127 on National Forest Road 231. So this is actually a portion of two parcels that we're looking at. So the highlighted portion here, that is one parcel. This yellow square here, that is the second parcel. However, we are only looking at the portion of those two parcels that are north of National Forest 231. So essentially, that would be this square here, and that would be this square here. So we're looking at 222 acres approximately, and those are the two, those are the two areas. So it is a portion of two parcels. So this property currently has a land use of Agriculture Zone A and a current zoning of Agriculture 10. That is not subject to change at this point. The lots that are proposed are larger than 10 acres, so they would fit that. The applicant proposes recorded, recording a plotted subdivision with 18 lots. The vacant lots would then be for individual purpose, individual purchase and to be developed by the purchaser. So the reason for two different staff reports, the, the comments that were sent back, one of my comments, initially, there were 19 lots, and one of them was a flag lot. So based on, based on those comments, Radiant decided to create 18 lots instead of 19, and combine those two flag lot, or combine the flag lot into the lot next to it, so that there were no longer any flag lots. So we did not receive that before the original staff report was sent out, so that's why you have a secondary one. So if you look in the, in the staff report, it shows the 18 lots. All of them are 10 acres or more, the largest lot being just over 20 acres. But the, on average, they are 10 to 11 acres for each track. So you'll see on the maps here, everything immediately surrounding this area is either Ag Zone A or Conservation, and everything around it, immediately surrounding it, has an Ag 10 zoning. You'll see there is just a little bit of the flood zone on these parcels. On south of 231, you'll see there's a couple of little areas there, but that's not part of, of this proposed development. There is a little piece that comes down right here that would be on one of the lots. So you can see this is what the lot layout would look like. Lot nine, you see, is a little wider than some of the other lots. That's where initially that flag lot laid, but you see that's been taken out now. You can see the acreage table there as well. So lot, lot nine is that larger lot of just over 20 acres. You can see the flood zone that I showed earlier, that right here is where you see it. On lot 14, 15, and 16, that's where it touches. There is a gas line that goes through this area, and it does kind of come across the middle of the, the lots here, but you'll see that is shown. So when the, when the buyers were to purchase, they, of course, would be made aware that there is a, a gas line that goes through there. This proposed development meets, you know, meets the, all of the parameters that we're generally looking at. It meets the land use and zoning. It's compatible with the land use and zoning surrounding it. National Forest Road 231 is owned by the National Forest Service, but it is maintained by Baker County. There's a road mates, a road maintenance agreement between the National Forest and Baker County for maintenance of the road along the entirety of, of this portion. So I have that road maintenance agreement if any of you are interested in, in looking at it. With that, staff recommends approval and LPA recommended approval as well.
What, Donna, can you send that to me?
Yeah, absolutely.
Questions or comments?
I got one question for Chris. How often are we having to maintain this on a regular basis and grade it regularly, or what?
We don't grade it regularly. It's, it's basically graded during hunting.
So if we put 18 homes on there, we're going to be grading it on a regular basis now, so.
Yeah, it would require more, more maintenance from the county.
It is sand. I mean, it's just shirking the entire area. Dry weather, it might grow.
This is just the preliminary exemption for the subdivision. Any other questions or comments?
What's the, what's the building restrictions on the gas line going through it?
What is the one?
Is there any restrictions on the gas line going through it? As far as setbacks and stuff?
They have an easement.
There's, yeah, it's, it's an easement. It would be really treated like any other utility easement. It's very similar to a traditional utility easement. So they would not generally be able to construct inside that easement.
Sure, sure, okay.
They get to maintain it for you. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the public have any questions or comments? All right?
I'm ready.
Thank you, ma'am. We're out of our public hearing, back in our regular scheduled meeting. I think we're on item number five. Unless someone needs a break. Everybody good?
It's rolling. Fairies, I gotta get to the fair.
Okay. Item number five, request for funds, equitable sharing fund, BCSO. How you doing?
Good evening.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, sir. Here to request, request the funds from the equitable sharing that the county holds these funds. I think this is a fairly regular request. I know, having spoken with Jeffrey, he said that he had done it every year. It's a...
This is the first we ever heard of this.
Don't scare him like that.
The, the county holds these funds. They're, they're from DEA cases. They're, they're not used to offset the budget, and they were budgeted.
Find, find support for the trust fund.
Yeah.
Test for use for expanding educational awareness and particular, like enhancement law enforcement goals.
And this has the latter.
Questions or comments? Most of the players of the board.
I have a question, Chris. Did you say what is being proposed the funds for is okay or not?
It's okay.
Okay. Move to approve as, as presumed.
Sorry.
Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good job. Appreciate it.
Item number six, acceptance of grant funds, the JAG grant, Mr. Blanchard.
Good afternoon, Commissioner and Chair. I'm back before you. Earlier, I came and asked for permission to apply for this grant. This is the JAG C grant, and it's in the amount of $28,832. We use these particular funds to help pay for our crime scene detective. It doesn't take care of the entire salary, but it supplements with our general fund. There is no match funds that are associated with that. We've been awarded this, and we're just asking permission to accept the grant so we can continue this. We've had it now for about seven or eight years that I'm aware of.
Questions or comments?
Do you add this in your budgets?
It is, and I know that the county manager is aware of that for this.
Thank you.
Motion to accept.
Second. Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Item number seven, emergency management, Mr. Schmitz.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. So not a lot of progress. I do want to follow up with an update from last week. We, we did replace slash fire our FEMA representative that wouldn't show up at the meetings. So we have a new, a new PDMG. Met with them twice in the last couple of days, and this gentleman appears to be very experienced, very anxious to advocate for the county and start moving our projects forward, which is really good news. We had a few hiccups last week, but I think we've navigated through most of those distractions, and I basically would like to give you, like I normally do, a line by line. So we'll start off with the countywide roads, the amount of 254,000. That's basically the, the last of three stages. It's the last significant stage, and then there are two short stages after that, and we should be moving to obligation. Again, those are monies we already spent for the boat ramp. So we are desperately attempting to move forward on the boat ramp. We're making good progress. We've met with AMI and Nordic on a couple of occasions, where we've got some ongoing conversations back and forth. They've requested some information to kind of help speed up kind of where we are in that permitting process and getting those folks involved. We're having a good time running down a lot of things, a survey. We have a survey from 1997, and we can't find a survey that's been done since then. I did reach out, after reaching out to EPA, the Riverkeeper, FWC. I've also reached out to LD Bradley, and they think they may have one, although they weren't able to pull it up when I was there in the office visiting. They're thinking that they may have something, so hopefully there'll be some good news there.
Just to clarify, that 97 one came from Arnold Johns. That was, that, the one from 97, I did get that from Arnold Johns. That's where that one came from.
Yes, ma'am, but it's theirs.
Yeah.
But that one didn't show up on their, it didn't pull up on their computer, because I think it predated their system.
I think so, yeah.
So, and where we are with that project, we're, we're trying to really narrow down. In fact, we did some back and forth tonight with, or this afternoon with Sarah. It's, it's tight, and, and part of the reason we need the survey, historical survey, is until they get their survey done, we're trying to determine where the wetlands are specifically and what the limitations of the lane are. So we've got some, basically, it's kind of tight for them. They said it'd be a little, it would be easier for them if we removed that existing pavilion that was kind of planned on being taken out, I guess initially in the Phase Two process, but it would give them more flexibility to be able to come in. They're really looking to make it single lane of travel and enough room to literally pull in, line up with the boat ramp, back in and pull out, so that you don't have trucks pulling away from the boat ramp and folks pulling up to the boat ramp on the same roadway. They're looking to put that in there, and it's a tight space. So that's where we are currently with the boat ramp. They will be out starting next week, beginning to do some surveying work. I don't know it's, it's the survey we're talking about, but there, we got permission to, today, confirmation today from FEMA, that they will accept the H&amp;H survey slash modeling to determine that it is mitigation to move the boat ramp to the new location. They will allow us to use the survey and modeling that was referenced in the original RFP and contract, and so we don't have to put it back out to a separate entity. And they also gave us a couple of different versions. I'm in a conversation late this afternoon. They gave them two options. They could do an injury, assigned engineer's summary report, or they could do a modeling, and they'll take the path of least resistance or what would convert to be the quickest path to get that going and get that information submitted to FEMA. And that's really the crux of where we're holding in the process of getting those agreed upon costs for the boat ramp.
So FEMA, sorry to interrupt.
No, sir.
FEMA, at this point, has agreed to pay for a model for us to mitigate or to show that moving the boat ramp 75 yards, whatever it is upstream.
150 feet.
150 feet, pretty close. Moving that, that far will, will be better for the county. So that's, that's where we're at right now. They have agreed to pay for that portion.
What they've agreed is it was included in our RFP.
Okay.
They haven't agreed to pay for anything yet. That, that's called obligation, but they did agree, and, and our argument was rather than sending it back out for, and having another contractor come in, adding the extra time, can we use the modeling that was already proposed? Have we finally got an answer to say, yes, they would accept it? As long as it's specifically...
So that's where we're at right now. We're doing the modeling to, to prove that.
And that actually should be going on simultaneously with some additional surveying as well.
Okay. And then at that point, that's whenever the contractor can move in and begin working.
After obligation.
After obligation.
So obligation is the point that the county knows that they're going to get the money for it. Remembering again that, that all FEMA funds are reimbursed funds. I don't, I want to be very careful. I don't want to give you a false sense.
Sure.
At that point, we are basically waiting on the notice to proceed. At the notice to proceed at the county level, and we're being, we're being judicious in the way we're approaching that timeframe. At that point, we can begin.
Right.
We're hoping obligation comes soon. We're right around in that same timeframe, and that way we know what we're starting. We've going to have the funds.
It's part of the conversation we need to have. Do you mind if I talk about our financing stuff? So we are actually, Commissioner Mobley and I have a Teams call with John Beal on Thursday afternoon. John is with our, our FEMA expert contractors that we actually hired several, several months back to talk about how we front the money on this. So John's got a lot of ideas on how we do it, and there's a lot of options. But that's part of our, our next steps is, okay, if we're ready to start, how do we start paying these contractors before the FEMA stuff comes in? So I asked Commissioner Mobley if he wouldn't mind to be a part of those conversations, just given his, his financial background also. So we're going to have that conversation via Teams this week. So we'll have some more information to report back to you all on, on that portion of it at the next commission meeting for sure.
And to add something to that, to support something we did this week, so the FROC training, and I'm sure you guys saw the emails going back and forth. Along with that FROC program, that's a state-run program that they will actually front some, the state will front some of that money. So unfortunately, it's not going to get to apply in this particular situation. But moving forward, as we get farther in, some of that upfront money, instead of having to go and either borrow it or figure out how we're going to pay for it, some of that money could come very early on from, from the FTM. Yes, sir.
I can tell you now, I'm going to be very reluctant to do anything until we have the money obligated, because as much as we may want to get it done, there is no guarantee you're going to get the money until it's under agreement and it's obligated. And right now, there's a lot of uncertainty on whether the programs are moving forward or not moving forward. We deal with federal grants on a regular basis where, where, and we have requirements that's put forth, and one entity, a federal entity, will say, oh, this is great. Another entity managing a program very similar said, no, we won't allow that same exact approach to take place. And you, a year later, it took nine months to simply get them to say, we agree to give you a new schedule, because we won't agree with what we originally said we would. I'm just saying, I, I, if you recall, we went down this path with all the federal money that we're dealing with, with the ball fields. We ripped up ball fields, because we expected the money in three months. We ripped it up and started work, and we went an entire season, an entire year, ripped up because we couldn't get the federal money. So I'm just, I want to be, just be upfront. I want to get these projects done, but moving forward without the funding, knowing we're going to have it, I'm, I'm not willing to, to put the county in the, in the position to fund these things and not be able to get reimbursed.
Yes, certainly.
It's our entire, the, the focus of our entire objective, Commissioner.
I understand.
And, and to take it one step further, we've, we've told FEMA, FTM, all the way across the board, you can tell those note first, we don't want to hear a de-gob on the backside. So the obligation is number one. So, the obligation is number one thing, and the most expeditious path to that obligation is our primary. Any other questions on the boat ramp? So, the next project is Shoals Park. We've put back out for RFP, and that project is going to be delayed a minimum until November the 11th. Did I got that date right? November the 5th, it comes back, and then it comes before. By the time we grade it, and that process, about a week. So, I informed FEMA today that it'll be November the 11th before we'll be able to probably produce a signed contract for that project. The good news is, after going back out and revisiting, some work has been done out there. And so, some of the, they've done what we would call the cat B work. I don't know if we captured those costs and those, and the materials and the labor and all of that, which we would be able to use for documentation of the maintenance on the backside. But I was really surprised and impressed with how much work has gone on on the roads out there in Shoals Park. I got a chance to ride them, almost all of them, on Monday. We're no closer, until we get that contract signed, we're no closer to being able to reconcile numbers with FEMA. So, that literally is in our part now. We're the delay. There's nothing FEMA is holding up on it. Once we produce them, FEMA will be able to step in. Steel Bridge Road. We've had multiple conversations and one meeting with, one onsite meeting with J.B. Coxwell. This is a, this project is, there's a significant amount of requests for information. The bane of our existence in this project side. We did get those answers submitted today to FEMA. They're questioning not only what the costs were, but they're also wanting to come back with the assigned engineers signing on to those costs. And there was some real confusion on FEMA's part. To be honest with you, we're hoping that sometime tomorrow, we see the results of us responding to that request of information, and we're really hoping to see some movement there because they're still operating off of the very early estimates of $465,000. And that project is well over 1.2 million. It's going to be a large project for sure with some extra monitoring. So, we are slowly but surely answering their questions and trying to get that dollar figure raised up to what we've already submitted as a contracted amount. Next project, the Box Culvert on 23A. That is also in that same third to the last process. So, that, again, lion's share is the county's portion. We should, we could be working on that project at any time. I'm assuming we started that process. Very small amount, 141,000 is on there. We did have another conversation, making sure that we keep the documentation lined up with the CRF model so that we can track and make sure we don't get in any trouble on the accountability side on the backside. Next project is Cat B Spa obligated the six culverts for the, in the amount of $27,599.11. That is also in the very last stages. That should be obligated very shortly. And Turner Cemetery Bridge is the last project. We have, they are operating off of our numbers. They have our contracted numbers. We've got a few RFPs, and in fact, recently, today, I reached out to the contractor to start moving forward on the permitting process. So, we're not anticipating any extraordinary delays. Hopefully, we'll get that in the works very quickly. FEMA recommitted today to having the boat ramp as our number one priority and time and focus, and Turner Cemetery Bridge being our second priority. With that, I can give you any questions on any of the FEMA projects?
Questions?
So, an update just very quickly on the NFIP Flood Plane Administration. Did get notified. I hope Ladonna was able to pass it on to you, Sarah. I know you haven't, weren't meeting with her very frequently last week, so I don't know if you had a chance to catch up with you. We did get notified that we're going to have a couple of CAV letters. That's Community Assistant Visit. And those were the visits which got us removed from the CRS program where they identified we were noncompliant. And so, two of those letters will be forthcoming. The good news, right now, the state is still working with us and FEMA is still working with us. So, they agreed to close portions of each one of those. I don't, I haven't seen the letters yet, but until I see the letters, it sounds like they closed up, closed out is the language they use. Closed out a portion of those noncompliant issues based off of what we have presented to them as our plan moving forward to become compliant. And then, the most important part is there's still no hammer. So, notifying again, official notification that we are not complying again with the NFIP, and we are no longer in the CRS, but no time requirement and schedule for us getting on board. We are moving forward. We had a conversation two weeks ago, I think it was, with University of South Florida. We've got another meeting scheduled, I think, for next week. And it does look like we'll be able to get some of that technical expertise in NFIP, and then that comes under our planning heading, Flood Plan Administration specifically, and then Technical Code Enforcement on that backside. So, we're very hopeful that we're going to be able to get some interns in to help augment and supplement Ladonna and her staff to help us get compliant on the most expeditious schedule that we can. I'd also like to bring the board up today. I know it's been a little while since we talked about the individual assistance. So, this is, again, those citizens that we were able to get relief, reimbursement. There's a lot of, a lot of different ways you could call it, but to get some help for the folks who suffered as a result of FEMA on a personal level. These are families that we're talking about here. And what I do want to focus on is just some very 30,000-foot numbers. We had 68 folks that had no eligible damages at all. We had 90, and these are, I say folks, these are families. We had 90 families who did not respond to FEMA's outreach. That could be a plethora of things, and those are 90 folks, 90 families, that we are actively looking for now. Ms. Colleen, I'm hoping she'll be back before the board here very shortly, since she's now taken leadership of the COED. But one of the things, we are actively spending some of our volunteer money that we've talked about, that we received from Volunteer Florida, Red Cross, the Community Foundation. We're going out and looking for those survivors to find out where the folks are that dropped through the system, that didn't get the help from FEMA when they asked for it, and so we're targeting those folks now. So, we have 90 families that didn't respond. We had 21 families, there's no reason listed why they didn't get relief. They were, based off of their numbers, they were eligible, but for some reason, 21 families didn't get any assistance at all. And then, we had 25 more families who didn't meet some level of documentation. In other words, they fell short of what FEMA needed to push their claims all the way through to an award. And then, we have 19 families who need to submit additional documentation. So, there's a significant number of families still out there that we're quite certain are feeling the effects still from that storm season, and we are actively engaged with our COED, FEMA, and our FTM partners to seek those folks out and give them some help where we can. Colleen texted me this morning that they have six families that they're actively working with, and at the same time texting the Red Cross, saying, when are we going to see the money I needed in my bank account so we can actually spend it? So, right now, we've only got about six of those, I guess that all adds up to about 137 families. We've only got six of those folks on our radar right now for help. So, with that, I think that's as complete of an update as I can give. I look forward to talking with you, Commissioner Bennett, on the transportation and roadways maintenance plan that I volunteered to champion, and I think you're the assistants I need to help me champion that.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions I can answer for the board?
Questions? Thanks for the update. Keep up the hard work. I know you're working hard at it.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Okay, item number eight, final plan approval, St. Mary's Cove, Phase Two. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, several weeks back, Robin with North Florida Professional Services came before you all and presented a plan for our restrooms at the St. Mary's Cove Boat Ramp. Just as a reminder, this grant only is for the design and permitting, so there's no construction as part of this process. Based on the conversation when Robin was here, you guys asked for some additional changes to be made, and that was with the lighting and the ventilation systems in the building. Robin has identified those and submitted the proposed changes, and has asked that you guys give your approval for these. We did submit these preliminary to FWC, and they have signed off on this as well. This grant actually closes at the end of this year, and so this is one of the final steps that we need to show FWC our completion on Phase Two. So, again, there's no changes other than what you guys directed a few weeks ago. And so, we told Robin that we'd be happy to submit this for him for consideration. If you guys have any questions, we'll be happy to take it back to them. If not, we are looking for approval on the plans as they've been submitted.
Questions or comments? Ms. Sarah, only question I have. Will we make sure that this site plan is going to work good with the new boat ramp and everything?
Yes, sir. We've actually put those two engineers in contact with one another, and they have had some communication and actually shared some reports for each other so that the work didn't have to be changed. What Dennis was talking about just a few minutes ago was, in the original discussion for this Phase Two, the picnic pavilion needed to be moved. North Florida Professional Services was able to make the property work and leave the pavilion there. However, it appears to be in the way of where the new boat ramp location needs to be. So, we talked about that this afternoon. If there's a need to move that pavilion and demo it, we certainly can do that. That's, you know, it's not a problem. But yes, sir, they have been in communication with each other, and the plans do work well together.
Okay.
From what we know as of today.
Especially after talking about turnaround and stuff like that.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. For those, the engineers have talked-
If you put a turnaround in there, that's when we're on the way.
Yes, sir.
Issues, there's a wetting field right there.
Yeah, right there at it.
Literally, right now, they figured 12 feet. So, it's that tight that they're now with the moving of the rivers.
Yes, sir. It seemingly will work with each other. And like I said, we're making sure they're having those communications with each other as well.
I would just say, make sure this doesn't hinder getting it all opened up.
Oh, yeah, for sure. As I said, Robin and our engineers with the boat ramp have talked several times. Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. President of the Board. Is that helpful?
We do need a formal approval on the plans just that we can-
We need approval. It says information on any-
I think, I'm sorry about that. This way, everything's been adjusted down.
Everything's moving around.
It is an action item.
It is, yes, sir. Sorry. But when we do our ADA compliance on that, it just throws off the margin sometimes.
Makes me more ADA.
I'm sorry. We are looking for a motion of the board for approval.
Motion to approve the final plan.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, approval of the quotes from the Sanderson Community Center.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So, big thanks to Mr. Doug Moore. He was here earlier tonight. Didn't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, I guess. I don't blame him. But we do have a couple of quotes before you. As just everyone is aware, we did allocate $50,000 for the renovation of the Sanderson Community Center. Greatly needed for an ADA bathroom and new windows and doors in that facility. Any of you have been in there, that facility has been in need of some love for quite some time. We're glad to see that this project is moving forward. We did get three quotes to be able to do that work. The low quote did come from our original contractor, actually Browning Construction, in the amount of $39,400. You could see we received a second quote from North Point Services, and then a third from Cornerstone Construction. While they were all pretty close in price, Browning was the low bid on that. So, we reviewed it. We've had conversations with that contractor. We have no issues or concerns with the work that's been presented, and staff would recommend entering into a contract with Browning Construction in the amount of $39,400 for these services.
Only question I have, Ms. Sarah, on this, which I knew that they would be a little bitter because I looked at the project.
Yes, sir.
Is, I know one of these is a local. Does it trip the local?
No, sir, it did not.
I just wanted to make sure that, because I see one of them's a local.
Yes, sir. No, sir. It did not make a difference on that.
Okay. Question? Yes.
Sarah, I'm not disputing your numbers. But the math ain't mathin'.
Yeah, I had the same question.
The total is not, it's not completely added up, so he totaled, are you looking at Browning's?
I'm looking at two of Browning's in the second page.
Yes, sir. That, so it's per page. So, page one totals 3360, and page two totals 5800 for a grand total of $39,400. He didn't put a grand total in there. He totaled it per page.
Oh, well, because he puts total, that's why it turned me off.
Yes, sir. The grand total for both pages combined was 30.
The math wasn't mathin' for me, so, okay, I see what he's doing.
We went back, we first had the first quote, and then we asked for the winners and order and all that to be added.
He added that all separately to it, yes, sir.
He should have put under his total.
Grand total or something. We're good.
It was a little confusing. I agree.
The information's there, so that's fine.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner.
Yes.
That is the grand total. That does not include donations and other things that expect to come in. So, the actual cost will be less than that.
Yes, sir.
And additional funds that are reserved from that will be used to further improve that Sanderson Community Center. So, there are donations coming in that will reduce our costs, so we will have revenue left over for additional improvements.
Yes, sir. You're absolutely right. It won't exceed 39,400, but most likely will be lower.
What I'm going to require is any donations or any kind of labor that's done be brought back to this board so we can recognize the folks that done that. And if there's going to be any changes to this original contract, we should be notified on the additional improvement.
Certainly. We can do that.
Okay. Most of the members of the board.
I move we approve the contract with Browning Construction for improvements to the Sanderson Community Center.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 10, a discussion for impact fee study. Ms. Sarah?
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So, this is listed for action. However, we don't need formal action. We just need some direction tonight. So, as part of our budget process, we talked at length about the need for an impact fee study. And you all did allocate $100,000 in our current budget to be able to do so. There is a document that I prepared that just kind of summarized why we're here and what we're looking for. But specifically, the $100,000 for you- There is a document.
Live, sir.
The $100,000 is, has been allocated, should you all want to move forward with every single option. So, if you look at the bottom of page one, there are several options, and really, it comes out to about $17,000 per option, right? So, $100,000 was budgeted as a worst-case, best-case scenario, however you want to look at it, if you guys chose to move forward with all of those options. That's really the primary reason for our discussion tonight, is if the boards so chooses to provide that direction, not if you need more time to consider it. We just need to know how to move forward with that vendor on that. So, just to add for clarification, the school district, we have had numerous conversations with them. They are very interested in participating and have said that they would like to move forward with the review of their impact fee. It has not been increased in at least 10 years. You can see that it currently is assessed at $2,592 per dwelling. And so, from that portion, they would fund that themselves. So, the school board, like I said, has verbally committed to move forward with that process and funding that on their end. So, like I said, there's a lot of information here. I'd be happy to go over it in as much detail as you'd like. But I tried to put as much information that I thought you guys would like to see, specifically on page two of the report, page three of your packet, since there is a cover page, that talks about what our growth trends over the last 17 years have been. I think that gives us a good insight on how many new parcels obviously are created each year for us to look at, you know, potential opportunities to have these impact fees over the last few years. And then, towards the back on page three of the report, I specifically go into a breakdown of each impact fee. Just for the public that may be listening, the impact fees that we could consider are fire protection, emergency medical services, law enforcement, parks and recreation, roads and transportation, and schools. And I kind of break that down into some clear and concise bullet points for you all on what they can be used for, and an example of how it could be used to help mitigate growth in the county. So, again, like I said, I'd be happy to go over that in more depth for you all. But like I said, I kind of took it step by step on each assessment that you could consider. And then, lastly, as part of this discussion- And then lastly, as part of this discussion as well, we talked about the need for an increase on our solid waste assessment. So that has been broken out for you there. And you'll see the table currently now, a single family home is at a rate of $55. And you can see from the table there and how we allocate those funds. Only about $409,000 are collected in special assessments. However, the solid waste budget is $1.3 million. So we do offset that with a little bit of grant funding. But the majority of that is allocated from the general fund of $516,537. So this is something that we discussed during the budget workshops as well. If you all were to consider some type of increase, let's see, on the solid waste assessment as well. Again, this is a lot of food for thought. And like I said, the end of the day today or our next steps would be the determination on what one of those, all or none, or however many in between you guys would like to move forward with. I think during the budget workshop, we kind of talked in length about, Rich advised us to make sure that we had all of our backup documentation provided to the company, Stand Tech, before we actually engage because that engagement of a contract sets your one-year timeline. And so for those of you that were on the board when we did our special assessments for fire, the collection of data that they need could sometimes take months. I think with the special assessment for fire, it was four or five months at least that it took us to compile all the data that they needed. So staff's intention would be to meet with Stand Tech and say, okay, these are the items that the board would like to move forward with for an impact fee or the special assessment. And then them give us a list of all of the backup data that they would need. So we can work on all of that in advance of signing the contract. So on day one, we sign a contract, we can also turn them over a full set of data. So they're not delayed by us working on that on the back end. So really, that's it in a nutshell. I'm sorry, I know that's a lot of information to go over because I'd be happy to take it step by step. But that's the overall summary of why we're here tonight to discuss it. Is what's our next steps and how would you all like to move forward?
Just for clarity, the special assessment for solid waste is a separate process than the impact?
Yes, it is. It is through the same company, which is why it was included in this, but it is a separate process.
Yeah, they provide the methodology.
Yes, yes.
How much would that portion, just the solid waste portion be?
So you all, it would still be in the same line as what the impact fees are. So with the school board covering their portion, you would still, if you allocated every option and the solid waste assessment, it would be $100,000 for this board, like what we've budgeted.
So right now, if we did fire protection, EMS, law, parks and road transportation, and now you're saying solid waste, our portion would be $100,000.
Yes, sir. Yes.
If you add the school in as if they want to be a part of this study as well.
Yes, sir.
Their portion, so we'd be at 117,000.
Yes, sir. In rough numbers, yes, sir.
As a rough number.
Yes, sir.
But the school would pick up their portion, so the county would still be left on 100,000.
Correct. Correct.
So normally, those amounts would be higher. I know from working with other counties. But what happens is they give the school board a discount because basically they're already counting rooftops and they're doing analysis.
They're doing all the, we're doing the study because, you know, as I'm saying this, as if we're going to do it, we're doing all the work that they would have to do anyways with this study.
And it's very similar data for each one of those. So when we looked at the school, or excuse me, the fire assessment independently, that was about $60,000 to do that study on its own. But because of you combining all of these, you'll see that's why that's such a reduced rate. Because a lot of that data is carries from one to the other. So there's not a lot of repeated work that would have to be done from one versus the other.
Commissioner, you brought up a good point. You can pick and choose off that list.
You can.
Do none of it? I mean, it's, there's a lot of flexibility.
Bruce, can you tell us why we have to have a study done for this to happen? Can you, can you explain that? I know there's some questions on that, why we have to pay $100,000. And we just don't just say, hey, $5,000 across the board and we set that number. Can you explain why we have to do a study?
Yeah, I'll do my best. So what happens is whenever you, whenever you're going to assess somebody from a use fee, which is what your solid waste assessment is, or whether you're charging impact, you're telling the public that we have actual cost, that it's not fair that the rest of the taxpayers have to pick up. So if you build 10 houses out on a road, it's not fair that the rest of the taxpayers in the county have to pay to improve that road for the 10 people there. So the 10 new homes, those rooftops are going to create an impact. They create an impact on transportation, which more recently, for reasons I can't tell you, they're calling that a mobility fee, probably so it covers more things. They're not calling it transportation anymore. They also have an impact to general government services, the fact that there's more people in the county from the building department to public works, et cetera. You look at difference in law enforcement and that cannot be used to pay for ongoing, like salaries and things like that. You're paying for actual infrastructure improvements with impact fees. So you might need a new fire station depending on how many places are coming. Parks, you may need new ball fields. You may need places for people to go. So the methodologies, it's, when we say required, we're backed into why I would advise you that it's required because it has to be fairly split. So let's go for impact fees first. The analysis is going to look at what our projected growth is. And then it's going to look at what the cost of providing services are from a capital improvement standpoint. And you split that projected growth by what you expect the cost to be. So it has to be fair. So the reason we retain an expert to make sure that it's fair is because if somebody, a property owner or a group of property owners feels that it's not fair, they can sue us. And the cost of that unfortunately is a lot more than $100,000. So part of what you're paying for is a defensible position so that that impact assessment is fair. The same kind of concept's true with special assessments like solid waste, fire. We went through the same process when we did the fire assessment. So you want to make sure that the people in that situation who are using the service are apportioned or they're paying their share according to what the costs actually are. So what you're paying for is you're paying for the sensibility to show that it's a fair assessment or fair impact fee on the capital side. So that we don't get accused of just arbitrarily coming up with a number. Because otherwise, you don't want government, and it's not right, to be accused of, they're just trying to make money. This is not a for-profit enterprise for us. This is really just to make sure that essentially the people who are here aren't have, on the impact beside, the people who are here aren't having to pay on their shoulders what new people coming in are creating as additional need from the county. And then from a, from a special, or from a special assessment side, trying to make sure that, again, taxpayers, what happens is you end up paying it out of general revenue. I appreciate that grants offset some of it. But taxpayers who do not use the service are actually subsidizing the people that actually do. Pleasure for that clarification.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, Sarah, and maybe this is just refreshing my memory. Who's the company that we're wanting to have this, do this for us?
Stand Tech and then there's a specialized.
Let's back into it. So.
Yeah.
Normally, you would go out to an RFP. But what happens is that we hire Bryant Miller Olive, which I'm sure you've seen at the Florida Association of Counties. So because they're a law firm, legal services are exempted from the RFP requirement. And then Bryant Miller Olive actually, as part of their legal work, engages Stand Tech.
Right.
You knew where it was going, didn't you? Thank you.
If I may speak to the solid waste side. Our solid waste tipping fees are $30 a ton. Everybody else around is at $70 a ton. We're currently reevaluating our tipping fees. They're going up. Our cost for solid waste is going up. We're running out of borrow, as they say, in the landfill that we're currently using. We're expanding into one of the latter phases of that landfill. So our costs are going up considerably. What you're getting out of general funds today to pay for solid waste is nothing like it's going to be two years from now.
That's right.
It's going to go up significantly.
Sales goes up too.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And I think the cost of leachate just went up over the past five years as well.
Yeah, and to expand on Commissioner Mann's comment right there about the landfill, he and I sit on that board and we're seeing that, you know, we're having to negotiate with Alachua at this point because they're using the tri-county landfill that we have, you know, I say in county, but it's actually in Union County, New River. They're using it and that's keeping our tipping fees down. But if we keep using them to keep our tipping fees down, at a certain point in the near future, we'll be running out of space. And so then a new one will have to be built beyond that. So it's, I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into it, sort of that, guys. To keep our costs down.
The question I have, are fire protection and emergency medical services all one? So what would be the use of having two impact or two studies done?
It would be, well, the use of funds are different. So you would, your fire services may build a fire station, right? But emergency medical services may need an ambulance and staff to actually man that specific ambulance. But again, that is up for, up for discussion. If it's something you would want to consider both of, would you, as this board, only want to consider fire or only want to consider EMS? But certainly the law does allow you to split it up even when your, when your departments are combined like ours. It's just how you account for that money internally. Very similar like how we did the fuel tax increases, right? Like we had, that was specific for capital purchases. So we had to offset the funds we were already using for a certain capital and use the new set of funding for it. So it's just in the way that you have to show that accounting for it.
I just wanted to make sure that we knew that in advance.
Yes, sir.
We, you can use for analysis and then you can use a fire purchase.
Right. Yes, sir.
Student budgets.
Yes, sir. And you're right, we do have two different budgets for that department. Even though it's one, we have a fire and then a rescue budget separately.
Up for $17,000, we would have professional analysis saying this is what is needed.
Yes, sir.
On the law enforcement side, explain that more in detail.
So I am not an expert on that, but I will do my best. So let me get to my scenarios on that.
I'm not asking for your expert opinion. I'm just asking you to.
So that's one thing, Commissioner Mobley and I actually had some conversations about this. He said, would they provide you any documentation? I said, no, they didn't. It was all just conversation. So this is something that I put together for you guys as a, as a scenario, really. But some of the things that I put, come up with for law enforcement, this is based on some examples that I found. So say you need a, as the county grows, maybe to the south or to the west, does the sheriff's office need a substation, right, to be able to patrol on a more regular basis and a response time closer to, you know, a large development? So you could use that for the construction or expansion of those types of things or even a detention facility. Let's hope we never get to a point to need that, but you could also do that as well. And then also purchase of additional patrol cars and law enforcement vehicles. So much like the city of McLennan supplements the sheriff's office budget, to have additional staff patrol the city of McLennan. Say you had a large development that needed one or two deputies specifically for that development, that this could be used to do that, for that. Yes, sir. So like the example that I had there was new growth increases, demand for patrol coverage. The impact fees could help expand the sheriff's substation and add a fleet vehicle dedicated to that area. So we got, we know we had a conversation about a large development off of the 228 area, right, that come up last year. And that was one of the comments was as well, you know, that's going to need at least one deputy on its own for that development. So things like that.
I'm, I'm, hang on, I'm not sure that that is completely the way it works. Because we are assessing these impact fees to everyone in the entire county that moves in. So it don't matter if a major development's coming in at this location and needs a substation. If somebody else is moving in over here, they're paying that same impact fee and it's up to the county to decide where it goes.
Yes, sir.
It's not about, because a big development's coming in and they need a fire station, that's why we charge impact fee. It is in generals.
In general.
Because additional capital purchases are necessary, whether it's new stations, new patrol cars, things like that. As a whole, I agree, large developments is going to create a greater demand in certain areas. Larger developments is also going to pay more, but it's, there's not a, you got to be careful. There's going to be a rational nexus between what we're collecting and what it's for.
You're absolutely right. My scenario is we're just, we're based on large developments. You're absolutely right, Commissioner, that it is, it is broad countywide as far as growth goes.
So, so let me, let me offer another, just a thought on this as well. One, I, I'm not opposed to an impact fee study. I'm going to be clear on that. However, how long is this study good?
So generally with the imposition of an impact fee, you're going to have a gradual implementation phase and then it sits there until you do another study. So what happens is generally with inflation, the costs continue to go up and then your, the fees that you're collecting fall behind.
So let me tell you why I'm asking my question. There's seven different areas here of, for a study. I can just tell you, I am not going to be in favor of increasing seven different assessments at one time over time. We don't know which ones we may need to impress and things and I think, or what they're going to generate. So I'm good with including all of these, but I just want to be clear that because if you're, if you're, if you're not understanding what we're doing, there could be the impression or interpretation that we're looking at raising all of these assessments at one time.
Right.
Assessments is a tax. I like the assessments over raising general revenues. Because it, general revenues and paying through antitrust taxes, the ones that work hard, buy property, put, build, house, whatever, they get, they get charged a whole lot more taxes and they might not generate any more trash or any more traffic than a mobile home does on a half acre lot that's exempt from everything. Special assessments tags each one of those that's producing it. So I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to special assessments. I'm good with them. I just want to make sure we understand and the public understands that even, just because we do a study for all of these does not in any way indicate that we are under any obligation or requirement to, to truly implement an assessment on any of them or all of them.
Right.
That is the board's decision at that time to be able to do so. But if we're going to go down this path, I'm going to advocate that we go down this path and we, we know what our options, all of our options are from all of these to make this, the decision on it. What I, I'm going to jump on the bandwagon with the two commissioners about the garbage. It's not just the cost of tipping fees and what we're going to be paying. Our facilities need upgrades. We've already talked about a couple of our facilities, we need to look at putting in a second compactor. We need to pave all of them, not just the little surplus of roadway. We need to pave them solid and get everything out of the dirt, out of the, there needs to be improvements at these facilities.
Absolutely.
I remember years ago when we had the dumpsters we pulled up and they were horrible. I remember when we went to these and these were like, these were like so much better compared to what we have.
Yeah.
These are aged. So I'm agreeing that there's a lot of things that we need to look at. But I just want to make sure if we're going to go down this path, let's do the full assessments, get everything, get the information so that we can make a well-informed decision on what is best for us down the road, not piecemeal it, to figure out how we get there. Because I agree, and I agree, the ones that we know, garbage is an easy one to tackle on because we know what it's costing us.
Yeah.
We know every household in this county is producing garbage. We, and we know what our cost is. They're clearly out of balance right now. So my thoughts is the studies, if we're going to go down this path, get all the information to know what, so we can make well-informed decisions when it comes time.
I agree with Commissioner Bennett.
Along, along your comments, just remember that if the commission decides to go down this road, there's a lot of opportunities for public comment and you will get them. And when the, when the law firm and when the methodology comes forward, they're going to present you what the highest assessment they believe is legally defensible. But there are many counties that come in below that. That just because they present you a higher amount doesn't mean that you have to adopt that higher amount. And like you said, if you adopt any at all.
But you can't go higher than them. You can go lower than them, but you can't go higher than them.
So that's.
It's going to be defensible.
You can't get higher because they wouldn't defend it. And also, but some of how, and I'm living through this in other counties right now, some of how those numbers are drastically affected are what. some of how those numbers are drastically affected are what you, as the commission, believe are the growth rates. So they can do an analysis based on a medium growth rate, but you know, I don't think it's anything that's not talked about. I mean, houses are sitting on the market now and then longer. So for the longest time, I would say probably from 2011, 2012, we've seen fairly significant growth that just skyrocketed during COVID as people moved in from other parts of the country. And as we see it skyrocket, you can't use that COVID time period as an accurate reflection of kind of the trajectory of what growth is gonna look like in our county. So when you, because you know your county better than the person coming in doing the methodology, when you take a look at what those proposed growth rates are, that in a lot of ways will have a ripple effect on kind of what the, what the impact they're gonna recommend would be.
I mean, you can see.
If, if you look at this, in the past five years, my numbers, I'm pretty sure they're good. In the past five years, what, on 2025, is this as of today?
It was as of the date of this October 17th.
So I mean, we're, you still got two, what, two months, right? Two and a half months almost left? And we're already past the 2024 at 195 right now total.
Right.
So I mean, over the past five years, you're averaging 161 new homes. Over the past five. Now, conventional construction of manufactured homes still have to pay the same impact, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, well, manufactured.
Because it'll be when they pull the permits.
Correct.
Well, because they.
It's per dwelling.
Right, per dwelling, yeah. It don't, it don't matter if it's a manufactured home or a conventional.
The only exemption would be if they already have a home and they're just replacing it.
That's right.
Fire, damage. Depends on what they put back. So if there's, there's what's called a substantial improvement or substantial determination where.
There was a house there, they're putting another house there, most of the time they're not gonna have to pay.
And then I, listen, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'll tell you what I'm seeing other places is there will be some landowner that comes in and says, you know, I had two houses on my property that burned down and I shouldn't have to pay impact on them because those houses were already there. Well, the challenge is gonna be whether or not the people doing the methodology actually accounted for that as a vacant lot or as a structure lot. And then even if we get to the point where the board considers imposing any type of impact fee, there's a 90-day window where you cannot impose it. It's a 90-day window so that you have to decide what your effective age is gonna be and things like that. So that if there's people that already have plans and progress, they can avoid the impact fee if they fall within that, before that 90-day window.
There's, there's also a lot of other things when we, when we raise the fire impact, these fire assessment fees. We also went through this issue of barns. Did you have to pay for barns or not? And we had to make modifications and clarifications to, to exempt some of those so that the barns didn't have, weren't obligated to have to pay the same. So there, no matter, first we gotta do the study to even know what the recommendations are. And then from there, as we go down this path, there, I don't care which path we go down to, if there is, if the board does move forward in implementing any type of any amount, there is going to be a roomful of people here saying how we don't need to do it. We just need to know that, that's okay, that's what we're here to do, to do what's best. Just saying, and then even whatever we implement, there's gonna be some challenges to that, to try to, that we'll have to work our way through. It's, it's just part of it.
Part of the consideration for y'all as a commission is also that right now, your millage, your ad valorem, your general tax dollars are paying these expenses. It's not that the expenses didn't exist. So if you would decide after the analysis to impose some impact fee, the consideration is that we should be looking to reduce millage because now your, your ad valorem's no longer paying for those things. So it should offset each other, it's not always dollar for dollar, but to some degree.
So is the direction of the board, what, what do you need? You just need us to give you direction to move forward? So if my suggestion, my recommendation, I'm glad to put it in the form of a motion. If we're gonna move forward with the impact fee study, we do the full study to get the full numbers and the full assessments to be able to have the information for us to make legitimate, appropriate decisions. So I'll put it in the form of a motion that we move forward the full.
Second.
Full amount here as presented.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I have a motion, a second, and open for discussion. I'm going to agree that we need to do the whole study, but I can look on this list here and I can tell you for a fact there's some of these items on here that I will not support. But I will go with the board's decision on the full impact fees, yes. We definitely need to look at that. But, and we definitely need to look at the solid waste. And we also need to look at parks and recreation.
Yes, sir.
That's the three that really need help. The others, I'm not support, sure, I'm gonna be insular.
Commissioner, to clarify my motion, I agree with doing the full study to get them all, but I can tell you now, there's a number of these that I'm not going to support. But I think, I think we need the information to know what the impact, what we can do. So I'm, I'm certainly, my motion should not be interpreted that I have to support doing all of them. I support getting the information for us to make this.
And I just want to, for my clarification, I just want that I agree with what the board's trying to do, but I just wanted to make sure that you know that I'm not in full support of all the seven impact fees. No way, Jose.
CC.
Not impact fees, assessments and stuff like that. But the impact fees is definitely, I agree. Lady today spelled it out so eloquently in her writing. And I agree with everything that she said.
Yes, sir.
And you can also consider there's available to commissions, you can exempt affordable housing if people come in and want to provide affordable housing.
There's several exemptions you can.
Okay, do you have a motion and second?
I have a motion and second, I'm sorry, I stopped it then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I had to do this, but I'm gonna take off. My daughter's showing animals, I've already missed one show, she's got another about to come back up and I'd like to get to the fair and see it. So I'm going to disappear.
You go ahead, enjoy your family. We're not gonna be here much longer anyway.
Well, just Commissioner, if it's okay with the chair, do you have any commission comments just before taking?
I'm good.
If he does, he can call in. The commissioners look a lot better when they call in.
I know y'all have a fan club, people like to see it.
All right, we had, I don't know, from a prior business report, pending business report, Ms. Sarah.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So one item that we can completely close out on here is the COA Senior Life Enrichment Center. When it comes to the funding part of that, just a, a quick announcement that the county did receive our 1.3 million dollar reimbursement yesterday.
Praise the Lord.
Yes, sir, it was submitted, it's been weeks and weeks and we haven't heard anything. So we were very excited to see that. We also are awaiting a reimbursement on the bus wash in Nav Sports Complex. All of that was all submitted relatively close together. So hopefully we'll start seeing those very soon as well. With that being said, I did get an update this afternoon from our contractor about the COA air conditioners and I'd like to just give you guys a copy of that email because I know that's been ongoing in communication. And so he wanted to provide some written clarification about all of that. In addition to that, I did ask for the COA staff to provide me with a list of any outstanding items that still need to be addressed. And so I have not received that back yet from the COA. But I did ask them as the users of the building, they're there every day, you know, I wanted to make sure that we didn't miss anything. So I asked them to be able to provide that to me. So once I have that list, I'll address that as directed by the, by the chairman. But like I said, I am waiting on that. So I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that email that circulated late this afternoon. Moving on down in our list, again, bus wash, again, just waiting final closeout as reimbursement comes from the state on that one. So no big concerns there either. St. Mary's Cove vote rent, we've talked about at length tonight, unless there's any further questions on that one, I'll move on down the list. The Shoals Park improvements, so currently Shoals Park is closed at the very moment and that's because we've got some logging activity. You guys are aware, we have a pretty robust timber management plan that we operate Shoals Park on annually. That was really, it came to fruition because our property went unmanaged for so many years. We had a southern pine beetle infestation about 10 years ago and that was detrimental to the property. And so we wanted to make sure that we did not have that happen again. So our timber has to be adequately managed, we know that, that thinning has to happen for proper forest management. So we are onsite now with our contractor. The reason why the park had to be closed is because about 13 miles of trails, about half of our trails roughly, are impacted by this timber harvest. And it's just a liability to have people in there while there's active equipment going on on those trails because there are so many that are interconnected, there was really, there's no safe way to close off those areas from public traffic. And so we anticipate, actually talked to them today. It looks like our timber harvest will be done by the end of next week. So it looks like the park will be closed for a total of about two and a half weeks, as long as things go as planned. This time of year is perfect because obviously we, we have to look for the rainy seasons, Shoals Park holds a lot of water. And so now was, was, our typical time is somewhere between October and November of each year is when we do our harvest each year. And so again, that just falls in line with that. So I know there's been some comments about why the park has been closed on, on Facebook and things. I just want to make sure that it's clear that it's, is on a quickest timeline as it can be and it's only out of abundance of caution for public safety that that park is closed. And if anybody has a seasonal pass that's been affected by the park closure, give us a call. We're happy to, to do extensions on those. Our staff is well-trained on that, they know if you've got a pass and the park was closed for three weeks and when they pull you over, if your pass has been expired for a week, they're not gonna say anything to you. They're gonna say, okay, well, we know, we, we try to extend those timelines on that too and be reasonable with, with that expectation. Moving on down the list.
Ms. Sarah, if there's any damage done to the trail system, does the contractor fix those?
They do to some degree, but most of, of that comes back in-house. They actually try to avoid our trails as much as possible. There are some areas that they have to get almost immediately up to that. And so they do, but to be quite, they're not trail maintenance people, right? So typically we have to come back in after.
I know I deal with them up in Georgia and they destroy your place and then they just leave.
In years past, we've had timber harvesters that did that. But our management firm, Andrew Wood, is very, very cautious about those types of things. He's out onsite pretty frequently while the harvesters are there and, and they, they try their best to stay off the trail itself. But there is some repair work that has to be done after those harvests. Yes, sir, certainly. Moving on down the list, we are really close on the Nav Sports Complex. Actually, I got an email just this week. I haven't had a chance to coordinate with that staff just yet, but they had some questions about some of the quotes that they had received and they're, they're pretty close to, to getting ready to start that project. So hopefully we're, we're right here at that. Moving on down the list, there's, there's really no update on the courthouse generator appropriation project. Again, just waiting on that generator to, to make its way here. Sanderson Center, we talked about at length again tonight. Thank you guys again for your support of that project. I know it's desperately needed for that facility and for the community and I know it's gonna be a great resource once it's complete. And then lastly is the community development permit software. Lada, is there any updates from the last time?
I have a conversation within Thursday.
Lada, you can come by, please.
I have a meeting within Thursday to hopefully get a timeline. Commissioner Bennett had asked for a timeline last meeting. So we're scheduled to have a Zoom on Thursday to hopefully get a timeline.
Thank you.
If you do get that, if you'll share it with me and then I'll forward it out to the board. Okay, thank you guys. So unless there's any specific comments, I know that was pretty quick. You guys have been here for a long time, so I'm trying to be concise.
I wanted to go back to this letter we just received.
Okay.
It's very disappointing to me to, to hear the contractor say, well, it's getting winter time and they won't have, their air conditions won't work as hard. But let me tell you something, summer's coming again.
Right, I know, I read that and thought the same thing.
Very disheartening to me. What kind of warranty do we have beyond the repairs that they're doing out there?
Just the typical, well, now on the equipment, I'm not sure, I'll have to get that information.
On labor too.
Yes, sir.
This county, this system hasn't been working since we've been out.
Right.
I would like to know from the mechanical contractor, what kind of warranty or guarantees they'll give us on this equipment? But we fixed to go into the cool time, yes. But we ain't had a good summer.
Yes, sir.
And until we get through a one summer that we don't have to call every other day to get our air conditions fixed, I don't see that this problem is resolved. And when I read that on here, it really was, I wouldn't have put that in there.
Yes, sir.
It's cooling down, they won't have to work as hard, they were made to work. That's why you put them in there.
Right.
I mean, don't make sense.
Yes, sir, I'll follow up with the COA also this week.
And I like all these people, they're good people. That is not a solution, it's cold weather outside, your air conditioning ain't gonna run as hard now, so you good for it.
Let's pray the heat works.
But it's gonna be summer again.
Yes, sir, certainly. I will follow up on this this week too. I'll keep you included on how that goes.
American Rescue Plan, play, phase one, any changes?
No, sir, I did ask for an update from the clerk on the reconciliation of that account and so hopefully I'll have that back from her soon. But no, sir, no changes.
Thank you. Physical year 2324 audit update.
Excuse me, I was trying to look back through my emails and find the latest update that we have. But I don't think we've had one in a week or so. We did have a team's call and I do have my notes wrote down from that team's call. But I'm trying to look and see if I have anything back, but I'm not seeing it. Right now, let's see. So the, the clerk's office has prepared with a mill, a mill's with CKH. Mills prepared the grant figures and shared them on Monday and they are in review with the sheriff's office right now. They're trying to reconcile back to what the, the county was showing versus what sheriff's office will show and the way they record the receivables. So the county gets it, the county records it as income. The sheriff's office was also recording it as income, so there was a.
It's like double reporting.
There was a, a conflict there, so we're working through it as far as a inter-fund transfer to the sheriff's office and they recorded it in that manner, not as income. This is something that I, I don't think we had done in the past couple of years from, from kind of my notes and what I was gathering. Both were, were showing it that way, but in the, the detailed audit that we're going through now, there, there's been a lot more detail in this one. As far as request, information from James Moore and what CKH is providing, there's, they're definitely going a little bit deeper with this audit. So that's, that's one thing they're working through right now. Jeffrey Cox with the sheriff's office, he's working on it. He sent an email to me today. Pardon me, give me one second. Audit date, and with that, he expects Wednesday to be back on with us Thursday night, hopefully to put the part. So he, he's hoping by the end of this, the end of this week, early next week, to have his portion done and back to James Moore to complete the audit. Clerk Harvey, during our update on Friday, informed us that she did talk to JALAC about the, the hard dates as far as the November 17th deadline that we have. It is a deadline where they will not impose penalties until they meet in December. So at the December meeting is when they will start imposing the penalties. But right now, our deadline is November 17th. So I think that there, there's possibility of a window out there where we're still not getting fined for being late. But that's kind of our, our deadline, our deadline of it being late.
It's a dangerous risk to take.
It, it's a dangerous risk for sure.
Our deadline is November 17th. Our deadline was way there.
Right, right.
We've already missed our deadline.
That's right. They, they've been gracious enough to extend it to November 17th at this point. And then until they meet again, you know, and, and in the December meeting, whenever the joint legislative auditing committee comes together in December, that's when the penalties will be imposed. But as of right now, it's, it's, it's when we cut it close, cut it close.
Where are we at on the balances?
The trial balance?
Yes. I mean, we, that's one of the biggest issues I heard that we couldn't balance out and I haven't, haven't heard anything.
A mill was working on that. I think a lot of it had to do with the, with the grants and everything, trying to, as an income, as a receivables or whatever. So I, I need some, I'll, I'll have a better answer for you on the next meeting and all that. But from what I understand. But from what I understand, I think we're pretty, we should have.
Yeah. The, the conversation really was centered around the grants reconciliation, so I would agree with the commissioner model. We probably need to get a little more clarification. We didn't touch on the trial balance in depth on that, on that call.
That's right. I didn't specifically ask that question, but.
I think it's a question we need to be asking because that is the lifeblood of the whole situation. Without that, we can't.
Right.
Can't do anything.
And from my take on it, I, I believe we haven't completed and, you know, this, this balancing and everything, everything's good. Now they're working through the grants which tie back to it. So I, I think we're far enough along in it that we're dialing into other areas.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? Have we got, Martin got out of here?
Commissioner Hartley was feeling very bad.
He was down to feeling well at all.
Yeah, I noticed when he was talking, I couldn't hardly hear him.
He held on as long as he could and he said he just couldn't.
Yeah.
Well, we'd be praying for him.
Yeah.
Were, anything else on audit?
Not for me.
Ms. Sarah, you have anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Rich?
Heard you talked too much tonight.
I agree. But I was going to ask you anyway, be polite.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner comments, Commissioner Mann?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Commissioner Mobley?
I just want to remind everybody about the fair. The fair is definitely in town, good opportunity to get out and see it, so I'm excited about it.
I'll be leaving Thursday, so I won't be around. I might try to catch it tomorrow, but church is tomorrow.
Well, I'll start shows tomorrow, I believe.
Yeah. They start show with.
Sales Thursday. Sales Thursday. Obviously, it's a great time to come out.
I stack of cords about know how to buy a P.
I did think of something. Commissioner Mann, do you want to talk about our meeting on Friday that we're going to?
You wonder I couldn't get to.
Yes, sir. So Commissioner Mann and I will be traveling to Gainesville on Friday. We've got a request to the chairman actually, to meet with Congresswoman Kat Kinnick and Commissioner Anderson's going to be out of the country on that. So I went to our vice chairman and asked if he was available and so we're going to go over. I think she's inviting everyone in her district, just have some one-on-ones, so not a problem that we're going over there for. We do have a little handout we're going to give her that basically just talks about what current grant funding and, and programs that we have through the federal administration and just asks for her continued support on some of those. And I said, we don't have any problems, we're just going to go thank her for what she does and, and, and make sure she remembers who we are over here. She always does a good job keeping an eye out for us.
Yeah, she is a very good help to Becker County.
She has been for sure.
I didn't want to miss out on the opportunity to represent Becker County and before I ever knew about this, I'd already scheduled to be out of the country, so.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to make sure Becker County was represented.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
We'll represent you well.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay. Anything else? Chairman doesn't have anything, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.